The underpass or overpass, there's a sign at the top of Pleasant Street, but can we have that marked that it's only 10 feet?
We have a sign at the top of Pleasant Street that says it's only 10 feet.
Right, I think we need one closer because can't really, people don't pay attention. Do you know how many trucks come down here and get stuck?
Yeah.
Yeah, I chased one the other day.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Well, there's not a sign on the other side that says 10 feet. And when I spoke to Nicole today, she thought it was 11. I spoke to someone else that it was 10, 9, and then obviously it says 10. So those are people that are involved in the project that aren't even clear on what it is. But there is no sign if you're coming from Gorham Bridge that way that states that it's 10 feet. There's only one sign and it doesn't say it on the trestle either.
Correct, and I'd like to see some kind of signage on the trestle, on both sides of the trestle. There's also, I noticed there's not a sign on Gorham Bridge either. There's one on Elm Street on Pittsford's Bridge, that's 10, 9. Um, but there's also not a sign on Gorham Bridge and I don't know if that's something that we want to think about as we continue to have people try to go over that, that do not have clearance.
Gorham Bridge is marked.
Is it marked on?
Both sides, 11, 6.
Okay.
I believe, and Pleasant Street is marked, the bridge is marked, but it's faded. It does say 10 feet and it's faded.
Ah, maybe we can freshen it up.
Yeah, it'll need to be freshened up, yes.
Just so that we.
But there it is marked, you just have to, you have to look for it.
Okay. Yeah, if we could get that freshened up, that would be great because I can foresee somebody trying to get through that.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on North Street Bridge?
Not from my side.
No.
All right. Beaver Pond Shared Use Path costs up to date.
Okay, I don't have a number for you. Uh, we had discussions with V-Trans and the additional engineering that you uh signed off on at the last meeting will be an eligible item under the 20, 80% grant. Uh, the discussion on the fence that Frank is putting in as to whether that will be eligible comes down to, to when it's put in or whether it's part of an easement uh deal requirement. Uh, but they are looking at it. The big one, of course, is the contaminated material and uh the engineers are trying to come up with an estimated cost to do it. Uh, what they are concerned about is possibly having to do a phase two environmental study, which takes out from the phase one and starts looking at more. Uh, but they are, they're trying to produce without going to a lot of extreme effort as to what the cost might be. And so that's what I'm waiting for right now as far as updating. And then a ruling from the V-Trans as to whether the removal of the contaminated material would be an eligible cost or not. What we're scheduling is a meeting with the engineers, the project managers, uh, the representative from V-Trans, so on a, on a Zoom call so that we can take them off rather than uh, spending time running around with emails because that's getting confusing.
They already told us that that contaminated part will not be eligible.
Okay.
That would be a town cost.
Now, the one thing that, that I put into the mill is that back when we did the water project, we discovered number two fuel oil at the well site and the hazardous waste division uh, gave us a grant to remove that. So I'm wondering whether that is still in place. Uh, I talked to Dubois and King about it and they are checking as to whether there's still a grant program for removing hazardous waste.
All right.
So we're, we're, as far as the update on the cost, it's, it's still in motion.
That doesn't make coming to a decision about it any easier.
No.
We've been trying to get a cost on this for two or three months.
That's what I'm trying to get.
Okay. Anyone else on this?
No.
It is getting expensive.
All right, if there's no contamination, then it would just move ahead as is and we'd spent what we spent, but if it, there is contamination, it could, it could jump it up to another 50,000 maybe even, right? Or something like that?
Yeah, we, you know, it was about, I think it was 22,000 to remove 55 gallons of number two uh, oil on Field Street. But the, as I say, the state picked up the tab for it under one of their programs.
Anyone else? Okay, is there any other new or old business? Okay, so I'll accept a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
Done, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One opposed? Okay, monthly activities reports, are there any questions?
Dan, I thought we were gonna look at a few of those uh delinquent accounts for curb stops.
Okay, you've got the list of the.
We did.
Yes.
We have them.
But as far as which ones uh we need.
No, I don't see it on the activities report here.
It's in our packet though.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But the guys didn't go out and locate anything is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Am I correct, Stan?
Yeah, the, the list of what we need in order to shut people off has been lacking for some time.
Yes, we, we, uh, the five of us understand that.
How many do you want shut off?
Well, we, we'd like an estimate of, you know, we've asked uh for some time now, a list of uh shut offs that are, you know, available, ones that need to be replaced, uh, the expensive ones, uh.
Yep. Okay.
That's the first you heard of it, John.
The extra column on the delinquent report that says we can shut them off with the existing facility or whether we need to have a new, new curb stop. What I was trying to get here a year ago.
Yeah, I think that's what we would all like to, to see.
Okay.
If you did note, uh, one Beaver Pond, one uh Gorham Bridge Road did make a payment on the near, on the near pass.
So yeah, Stan, I was gonna ask, so this, this payment column is whenever the last payment was received?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, you know, some of them have agreements, but most of the agreements have, have voided. Uh, what Celia and I have talked about is that uh, as of July 1, whoever is delinquent at that time, we would send out the new disconnect pink slips and start the program over again.
Right, the uh past due accounts here, it doesn't tell us if it would cost us more to turn them off than we would recoup, uh, we have no idea.
You're talking, Tom, about the ones that don't have shut offs that we would have to put those in?
Correct, yes, you know, I don't see any expense in spending $5,000 to recoup a thousand.
Well, let, let's focus on the top 10 and just do 10 at a time instead of focusing on the whole list.
We've been trying to do that for how long now?
Right, but COVID shut that down.
Long, yes.
Yeah.
COVID shut that down. Yeah, we could not shut anybody off during COVID.
No, but we could locate and, and get a plan going.
Yeah, which we, which we pretty much do, we just gotta get going at it. We'll get going on it here shortly.
Yeah.
I'm doing, I'm doing two, I'm doing two of them tomorrow.
Which two, John?
48, 48, I'm, I'm doing 48 because it's a broken, has a broken curb stop which is on the list.
48 Williams Street?
No, 48 West Street and I'm also doing one on 49 West Street because they have no curb stop.
And the one on Kane Street doesn't have a curb stop, I'm muted, hold on, I don't know. That one doesn't have a curb set, right?
On Kane Street?
Yeah.
Which, which one is that? Yeah, that is a curb stop, we put one in, we put that in there.
How come that one's not shut off? That guy?
It is.
Is it, is it Benham Rogers?
Yes.
Yeah, he's shut off. He's been shut off for two years now.
That's what I thought, but this list doesn't differentiate which is shut off, which isn't.
Oh.
Why, why are we digging him up if he's shut off?
It's the other one on West Street, he's putting in two curb stops where there aren't any. He has more than one property.
No.
Tom, the one that's shut off is 15 Kane Street, the very first one of them.
So can we either eliminate those that are shut off on this list or, or maybe make a note which ones are shut off?
I think the note would be the important thing, the idea of keeping all of them on there, I think is valuable to know what we got.
Okay, yeah.
Or you can just highlight those rows, that would be an easy way if they were just a little bit gray, you'd know they were.
Right, yep. That's fine.
As I think I mentioned before, Celia's planning a tax sale after 1st of June, July, or once the lifting of the executive order, and I would put uh Mr. Rogers on that list.
As we haven't gotten anything from that one on 2 North Street, have we? That still was.
Yeah, that's been going on forever, hasn't it?
Yes.
And that one's, that one's not shut off, right?
No.
Why not? Cause you can't shut off during COVID and we didn't shut it off before COVID. Well, I know we can't shut it off during COVID, but this was pre-COVID. It didn't get shut off pre-COVID, she was making payments for her aisle. Oh, I remember that, but that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, she came in and signed an agreement that was consistent with what the select board had asked for and then she stopped paying on that.
Right.
She said she was putting the house up for sale and when it sold, we would of course recoup our lot, recoup our outstanding debt. Uh, as far as I know, it hasn't, and she was working with some nonprofits to provide some assistance and that didn't come through. So that, and that, well, that was a year ago, yes.
Right, so I agree with Carrie, can we just take the top 10 to start with that are the highest and where we can shut them off?
Yeah. Let's do them in group.
Can we shut them off now or we still have to wait?
We have to wait until July, after July 1.
Okay.
Or.
I can go out, I can go out. I'll go out, I'll go out and look and make sure that uh the one, the top 10 are um can be shut off and if not, I will make sure that they can be.
Well, and to be clear, we have to wait until the state of emergency is lifted, don't we?
Yeah.
But I, but I could go, I could go out and take and check all these out and then I can go in. If they need a curb stop, I'll dig it up, put a curb stop in. So when this is all done, we're moving forward and we can shut people off.
That sounds like a plan to me.
Yeah.
Thanks, John. Yes, thank you, John.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And a thanks to the, to, to the Public Works guys.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so anything else on delinquent accounts? Any other new or old business for water? All right, sewer report? I make a motion to go out of water into sewer?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any questions on the report? And we have the delinquent accounts on the same graph, I am assuming, cause it does say W slash S.
Yes.
So, any other discussion about that? Okay, Willow Street, date revolving loan application, didn't we already do this?
You already did that, didn't you?
You did that under the, I just put it down for an action item. Just to guess, it's just my way of making sure that if somebody asked, was that an action item? Yes, it was.
All right, any other new or old business for sewer? All right, I'll accept a motion. I make a motion to go out of sewage and back to the regular select board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, committee reports, any committee reports? Yeah, we had a, we had a, we had a rink and pool committee meeting. I submitted minutes to it, so um, so they painted the doors over at the rink. Um, they're planning, this could be touched upon, but Memorial Day, they're having movie night with popcorn on Sunday. Um, they've got flower boxes that were made by the, with Boy Scouts. Um, they look awesome, they're really nice. Um, and they've gotten a lot of, um, they got all the donations that they were seeking for the roller rink um, and are ready to move forward to that with purchasing skates and stuff, so. So I did hear back from Wade and that will be added to the next meeting, the next regular select board meeting. Okay. Any other committee reports?
The mosquito district meeting, it was kind of uh, uh, there were some technical difficulties and what have you and they're just go, went over the bylaws and what have you, so. But uh that was about all that the last meeting had uh, had to do with. Uh, Transportation Council uh just made recommendations to V-Trans on uh road, road projects and what have you. So that's all in the works.
Bruce, is the Main Street Railroad Bridge included in their list now?
Uh, no, I've gotta get that back on the list, I didn't, didn't see that, I will um, I'll get ahold of Devon and make sure um that uh if it's, if it's gone somewhere. If it's gone somewhere, I'll make sure it gets back on because it was on there.
So the Ureland County Solid Waste District, no big news, we are, we are doing, redoing the personnel policies. So I'll be well versed in that when that comes up for us. And next month, we are meeting at the transfer station to go on a tour and discuss the needed improvements there. Uh, nothing for RRPC, cause that is, I think it's this week, I gotta look at my calendar. Yeah. There's a special meeting, the next meeting coming up for them after that will be two months because they don't meet in the summer. So, all quiet. All right. Review bills and sign select board orders. Any questions, any discussion?
Yeah, the packet is here on my desk if anybody has any questions and wants me to look up something.
Okay.
Good.
Budget report?
Uh, I said I would have a projected through the end of the year, uh, I apologize, it's not there.
Will we be able to have it for the next meeting?
Yes, I'll make a point to, to put that top on my priority.
Okay, so we'll have to add that to the agenda because we don't generally talk about that at the first meeting of the month.
Well, I've, I've been putting them in at, at every meeting just for the sake of putting them in.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions? Okay, pool facility use agreement for those kids at that elementary school. I say everybody but the sixth grade.
I was in your son's class, um.
I heard.
No.
I said, did he point you out? Did he make you an example? No, darn, darn. I make a motion to approve the facility use agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're supposed to spray up there before this event, not, they're, they're getting pockets to spray. Okay, so that passed. So the 1220 and 1252 West Street offer to purchase.
You've got a map showing the properties. Uh, Bruce Carrington would like to purchase the property with the town owns just to the north of his existing one, which is uh 2252, or 1252. Uh, he had originally, he included uh 1220. However, I received a call from the, the daughter of Shirley McCullough and said they have owned that piece of property. Uh, Bruce said he thought he owned, that the town owned it. Uh, the tax maps show the town owning it. So I think we're just talking about 1252. Uh, he keeps it clean, he keeps it mowed, it's between the town right of way and the railroad, the old railroad right of way and he would like to own it so that it can keep uh uh four-wheelers from making a big mud puddle out of a piece of town property. He originally wanted to buy the whole thing all the way up to the point, but uh with that uh call I got today, it's not available because it doesn't belong to the town. So it's just the one which is 1252. Whether you are interested at all, uh, if you are, then I would go the next step and see what he um, might offer to do it and then bring it back to you. Again, if you decide to sell a piece of property, you need to advertise it so that somebody could petition to have a special town meeting to vote on. But the big question is whether you're at, at all interested in disposing of that little piece of property.
To put it back on the tax roll seems like a good idea to me, I don't believe it's usable for much of anything for us, is it?
No, there's, there's a drainage course I believe that goes across it which would have to be continued, that's all.
Can't see any reason not to entertain an offer at least.
Yeah, see what the offer is.
I'm fine with it. All right, so we don't need a motion on that because it doesn't.
Just, just consensus that you're, be willing to talk with him.
Yep.
I will put another story onto uh his offer when he was, when I was talking with him. Uh, you know, you have a new property owner down on the Corliss farm who are raising goats.
Yes.
He almost had to call John Corliss last week, they almost had to dig a culvert up because there was a goat in the culvert and couldn't get out. And Bruce and the owners got down, or yeah, got down there and they were able to get it out, but it took a rope and a, and a piece of tarp and whatever else to get behind it to kind of push it along to get it out of there. So I think they probably have a screen over the end of the culvert right now.
It, it was the Cape and Farms, Dan.
Cape and.
John, you have a lot of property there, you didn't even know you had.
I wish, yeah, it'd be great, if I could have water though, oh.
Yeah, they got a lot of goats. Indeed. Okay, refinish floor proposals.
Uh, gentleman was in last Monday, measured it up, but I have not heard back from him. What I included in your packet is a memo from uh Jesse Stratton who did our asbestos work on the town office, uh, saying what we need to do in order to have it removed. First one, the quote that I got in college, was he said he was just gonna be removing it and bagging it up and taking it to the appropriate landfill. The question I didn't ask him and which Jesse asked me to, that I needed to check on was whether he is certified, whether he has gone to the OSHA courses. Uh, I held off on that, the second person who came in has not been to the OSHA courses and he would not touch that floor until such time as the tile had been removed. Whatever it costs to have it removed and I need to talk to the first guy to see if he is certified and that there is, would be no problem getting rid of it.
So, I guess my question is, how would the board like to proceed? Because it's kind of holding off our technology, do we want to just put down a rug on that floor, which we have to do anyways, an area rug, and get the technology and move on? Or do you want to do the floors and get them done? I guess my thought is that in a month's time, we could all be meeting in there anyway. We still need the technology, we're still gonna get. The emergency border lift is lifted, we want.
Well, there is.
Right, we still need the technology.
Doesn't really affect our technology.
Well, I know, but we, like, we had meetings before, we'd still have, we'd have those open to the public. Okay, but that's still, okay, so here's the problem, we're still getting the technology. So, my question is, do we refinish the floors or just put a rug down and not refinish the floors this year? Because if we start with the technology and then decide to do. Because if we start with the technology and then decide to do the floors, we gotta change up how we're meeting and if we can and cannot use the technology. And if we can and cannot meet at the town office.
Cause my hope would be to just throw a rug down.
Well, why are we worried about the assessor's office at this time? That's where the asbestos.
It's just the entryway to the second floor. And uh, the carpet is looking bad. If we're gonna do something, let's do it all.
But we could just refinish the floors in the hall.
Yes.
If we wanted to. And Stan, did you say we don't have an estimate for the floors in the hall yet?
I haven't got the, the second bid, but yeah, the, the, the meeting room, my office, the entryway, the ones that are clean hardwood, we can have those done immediately.
What's the cost on those?
Oh, I don't have it broke out as a separate item. As opposed to the, in front of the rail.
Well, even if it, with the front area, because I, I'm assuming the abatement isn't in that.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue there.
What, what's the, what's the cost just with the front area?
Let me get, I don't have the number. And I never did get, happened to receive the second quote either. But let me get numbers for raking it out as a separate, separate project.
Yeah, if we could have those, maybe we'll, we can make a decision by the next meeting.
Well, we can't make a decision without a meeting, but we probably have to have a meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can squeeze a meeting in if we get a, get the numbers.
Well.
Second bid.
We were, we should have a meeting the first Monday in June anyways. Because we have to continue moving forward on all the things we need to get done before we have a new town manager. So if we can have it for that, that would be great.
Okay.
So we can make a decision and be done. Okay, quick Memorial Day coverage. So the question is, how much coverage do you think we need? Do you think we need coverage for the entire weekend, extra, extra coverage? Or just the parade?
I thought it was just the parade.
Cause you got the fishing derby, the parade, the music, the movie.
We've never had a share about a movie before at the rate.
I, I think honestly, just the parade and even that's gonna be minimal.
Yeah, it's gonna be a small parade.
Yeah.
Do you think Beaver Pond is fine, Tom? I think we are having a warden.
I think we're fine. I, I don't see it as having a huge turnout there.
Well, right, the only thing that was concerning was the parking, but I think that Jim will have that covered.
He said he would.
So I think just the parade.
Sounds good.
That's all we're booked in for now.
Okay.
With the question I asked is if there is someone on duty when these other events are going on. Way a check-in.
Yeah, that would be nice to have a check-in. Absolutely. Okay, the next item is ARPA. And I asked in to put this on here because this is the um, money that the federal government is giving towns. And Judy and I were on the call and then Stan and Celia were on the call. And we have to have a public meeting regarding it to get ideas from our public on what the um, what are ideas for this funding? What can we use it for? It's very specific criteria. So I wanted to put it on the agenda to see what you guys think and when you think a good meeting and how you would like to approach that. Did you wanna narrow down five projects? And then go to public regarding those five projects? Or did you just want it to be open forum? How did you wanna go about it?
Coming up with five projects seems uh, a better idea to me, something to focus on. Let the people with the money focus on.
And to guide the discussion.
Okay.
Because no matter how much we talk about parameters, I think some people will have the idea of this is just a Santa Claus kind of situation.
Well, that was kind of my thoughts and to put on five projects that we felt were important, you know, like sewer or, or there's, there's so many projects that we could use this money for to help us in town without bonding. But I don't think that five is a hard thing to come up with. Uh, so did we want to add this to the Monday? What's the first Monday? Is it June fourth?
No, it's later than that, I think.
No.
Uh, seventh.
So maybe everybody get a little list going and we can talk about it the seventh and then come up with a date for this public hearing. So I'd like to do it sooner than later so we can get this moving as soon as it becomes available.
Did everyone hear what Ohio's doing with part of their money?
No.
No.
If you get your vaccination, you get entered in a lottery. They're giving five one million dollar prizes to adults and five full tuition fees, room and board for your scholarships to anyone who's college age who gets vaccinated.
That's crazy.
Doesn't he seem like it fits the criteria?
No.
The White House just came out and, and was behind it.
Wow. Well, we're not getting that much.
Of course they are.
We are not getting that much money.
I just read it this afternoon.
Stan, would it, it'd be helpful if you or like John or somebody could kind of compile a list of what's going on and where the funding might need to go, like, you know, some major, like any, I think anything in the town that's an infrastructure thing is, is big. Cause we always have issues with water sewer and stuff like that.
I think that would be good and I think I, I welcome any board members' ideas too. So we can discuss them that night and, and come up with our top five.
Let's think about the lagoons too, because that's.
Yeah.
That, that was mine. The, definitely the lagoon. So alright, we'll put that on the six, seven special meeting.
Ice cream trucks here on Park Street gang.
Oh, eighteen minutes off, I was. So town manager search. Judy.
Well, um, I sent, I sent you guys the job ad. Did everybody get it?
Yes.
Does that look okay?
Yes, I, I thought it looked fine.
I know, um, Bruce, you mentioned about having the submittals going directly to the town.
Yeah.
Emails?
Yeah, I just thought it'd look funny to have it to a particular person.
Well, I, I've noticed in a lot of the places that they'll have, um, if they aren't using a um, an agency to help them, assist them, then they will often have it go to the chair of the select board.
Whatever.
That's why I put Carrie's name down.
Alright, so is, is everybody okay with this ad?
I'm good.
Alright, do we need a motion to run this ad, Stan?
No, just a consensus that you're having verbiage.
Alright, is everyone okay with having them filtered directly in an email to Carrie? Or, I mean, Carrie, are you comfortable? Cause I know you have trouble with your email all the time.
I, I am comfortable. Um, let's discuss which email you use and let's make sure that that's the one working. Cause Stan just opened up a Carrie Covey email account, so I haven't switched to that one yet. Because it did say Carrie Dougherty, so now I have to move that mail to the other and.
Okay, so the one that, hold on.
We're gonna work on that tomorrow.
Okay, the question to all the board members is, I'm gonna switch over to sending everyone at the Vermont, ProctorVermont.com address. So hopefully you can all receive it.
That's what's on our.
I don't know how many other people are getting it through that.
That's what's on our Chromebooks.
Yes.
I never use that.
So um, I also, Stan, I got a call from the dot gov people today. Am I supposed to? I'll have to call them back tomorrow. We'll call them when I'm in your office.
Yeah, that's, that was, you know, we're, we are setting up the process. I think we decided that the decision as to when we make the changes, as soon as we know the details of making the change.
Uh, yeah.
I'm surprised that you got the uh, the message rather than.
Yeah. I thought that was odd.
So Carrie, the email I'm using is um, doughertyc41a@gmail.com.
Alright, so let's not run the ad until I, I'm gonna work on the Carrie Covey tomorrow. And as soon as I have that all set up, which will be tomorrow, we can go ahead and run it and we'll run it with that email address. So at least it says Carrie Covey at Proctor.
Okay.
Instead of my personal email.
So is everybody okay with that on the board? Is anybody else opposed to it going to the chair?
Ultimately, I think it has to go to somebody. And so, you know, Carrie. So my question is, is it, did we, and I think this is what we landed on that you guys are gonna screen the candidates and then forward the interviewable ones, yeah, the top five?
Yes, so I would be sharing the, the candidates with Judy, then Judy and I would screen and then we'd share our thoughts with the board. We'd have a meeting.
A meeting to go over them all.
Yes. Alright. So we can not. We can make that happen this week. Let's get it going.
Uh, we're gonna take it and, and put it on the league's website. Uh, there was another one that you, somebody suggested and I can't, I didn't write it down.
Indeed.
What was that?
Indeed.
Indeed.com.
He's not agreeing with you Stan, she's giving you the name of the.
Indeed, Stan, you're correct.
Dot com.
Dot com.
Yes.
The city did share with me, I'm someone that they had used when we were just doing some recruitment. And they were looking for the uh, building and, no, the commissioner for the city. And they hired someone who basically took in all the applicants. They did all the advertising, they did all the screening and they did all like setting up for the interviews and stuff. So she passed that along just in case we ever had second thoughts, but it ended up costing, and that was, you know, nationwide. So um, she didn't spend over thirty-five hundred on that, but they charged like ninety dollars an hour. And I just, I don't, I didn't know if we really felt that we needed to reach that far out, that branch that far out. And indeed actually reaches anywhere, so. I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, if, if you've got the information as to how to make contact, I would be happy to, to send to anybody you want to send it to.
Alright.
You decided not to put it in the Herald, I think.
Correct. Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, Sheriff Department Report. Any questions, comments, other than I wanna reach out to the sheriff again on that speed limit sign? And I wanna reach out to the sheriff and uh, let's do some, some tickets and some warnings on speed in town. Effective tomorrow.
Ticketing.
Yes, tickets.
There, there was, I said, did send an email to the sheriff asking if, if there was a minimum speed limit that towns could put into their ordinance. Of course, I haven't heard back because it went in late this afternoon after I talked to Mary. Just so that you would have the information. If in fact, uh, you had considered that street plus any other streets, that maybe you wanted to put a lower speed limit.
Anyone else on the sheriff?
I just did a really cursory search of Vermont statutes and it looks like twenty-five on, on town roads is as low as you can go. Unless it's a school zone, which is defined as two hundred feet away from school property. Um, now obviously, we would wanna have the sheriff's input and probably Allen's input too, but that's what I found in the Vermont statutes.
Well, you, you looked it up. What I was doing was passing the buck to just, hey, come back and tell me the same thing you just told me.
Do what I can.
So I also, I, I'm gonna be calling the school tomorrow about the parking ordinance anyways and having a discussion with Christie again. And I gotta call Tapestry tomorrow and I gotta call the high school tomorrow. So I'll just kind of mention and see if Christie has any ideas of what the school would like to see. I'll just make sure that she's aware.
And you, you have a meeting at nine, nine o'clock here tomorrow morning?
Yes, I know. My whole day is gonna be town business.
You said your Tuesday's your town business day, yes.
It is town business day. Alright, any other new or old business?
Stan, was the uh, the concrete railing out front on the new walk repaired?
No, it's not.
Have you heard anymore?
I haven't heard a word back from him since the first time he said that he would take care of it. We can put that on my agenda.
Anyone else?
Yes, this is Mark Pennagini. Can you hear me?
We can.
Um, let me see if I can, I gotta at least be speaking to somebody there, Stan. Uh, I had a nice meeting with Stan. This is about the sixteen Pleasant Street sewer project.
Okay, can I just, now that we don't want here, we had discussion earlier and we are going to have an informational meeting for you. We're, we're not gonna answer questions regarding this project during the select board meeting.
Right.
And yours are no longer here.
That's fine. I'd like to make a meeting with Stan if he can meet me back out at the property this week.
We can do that.
You pick a time, Stan. I'll be more than willing to make myself available.
Uh, five thirty AM on Thursday morning, no. I, I agree the rest of the week, uh, so almost anytime that you happen to be in the area, we can make it.
Okay. Um, is there a historical society in town? Stan?
Uh, yes, it's the Proctor Historical Society.
I, I'm gonna be looking for some original maps and maybe photographs of the box culvert drain. Would anybody in the town have any recollection? There's a box culvert on the property that drains underneath the railroad tracks. And I've searched for two days to look where it comes out. It flows approximately twenty-eight gallons per minute uh, with no rain.
Yeah, Mark, it, it comes out at the intersection of Meadow Street and Willow Street.
Underground? Well, Stan, I need, that's what I'm um, I'm gonna be looking for. Did they make copies of the videos of the?
Mark, are you, are you a Proctor resident, Mark?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I have, I have the videos and the report that they did on the sewer line, but not on the box culvert.
Right. Um, and then on the, the flow rates and overflow for the, the town sewer during rain conditions is the reports on that.
Uh, what I may have is, no, nothing in detail. It would be the pump time on the uh, pump station. pump station and I don't believe that we maintain those records. We watch them as we go by, but I don't think they're maintained as far as the amount of water that gets pumped.
Okay, alright, well, hopefully you'll work with me, you know, as a sewer engineer and expert. I really have concerns about this. I'm sorry I couldn't be on the call sooner. I apologize, I work very hard and but it, it's a great concern. This goes back to 1896. Many of the trees there are 125 years old. So I look forward to working with you, Stan, and the town on getting this situation resolved.
Yeah, the bottom line is it needs to be done.
Well, there's always other options. And then we have to look at what the as-built situation is going to be done.
Gary.
You know.
So.
We look at, but.
We're gonna.
I didn't want to take up time.
Mark, 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 we're gonna continue the conversation at the meeting that is going to be about this so that citizens can hear about the project and, and express their concerns, because this isn't.
Right.
Format to do that and the engineer's not here. This is a project that has to be done. So Stan can look at that with you and we will make sure that we have residents in that area notified as to when a meeting can exist so the engineers and everybody is there to answer questions.
Right, did you just say June 6th? I took that down.
June 7th is a special meeting.
Okay.
June 7th, it, it's not a public meeting. June, it, I mean, public isn't coming, but we have an exact agenda on that day.
Right, and when do we think, when do we think this meeting is gonna take place, the one you're talking about?
I do not know. We have to first see when the engineers can meet. So we'll probably start there.
Right, and I need to get all this documentation from Stan ahead of time. You know, I need to see the films of in, the inside of the pipes.
That's part of the project. And that was at the public hearing that we had.
Right.
So.
As a citizen of the United States of America, that's public documentation and I'm gonna be looking at that.
So go to the town office and get a copy of the project. That's all you need to do.
Stan's been working on that to try and get it to me.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, so when, when do you think, Stan? Tomorrow night?
I, I, I'm gonna have you contact Stan via phone and not at a select board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Okay, is there any other new or old business? Is there any need for an executive session?
Nope. I moved to adjourn.
Okay.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you so much. See you all.